I call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It is November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve. We're going to have the invocation. I'll call Commissioner Dale Robertson to lead us in that. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Chairman Berkey Jennings. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the blessings of this day. We're thankful for your care, your guidance. Father, we pray now that we might have your blessing of wisdom to make decisions that are in the benefit of the citizens of Alexander County. Father, as we pause this evening, we would ask that each one here might understand that their opinions and their positions are important, but so are their neighbors. And Father, we'd ask that we might all have the wisdom to be respectful and courteous to each other. We pray now that you would bless those who are in service to this country. We pray that you would bless those who are in service to this county. And we pray that you would be with each one here, that we might have safe passage home. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our eye, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. I will have to say, this is the most attended meeting that we have had in my four years of being a county commissioner. I'm going to call on Darrell Robertson and Larry Yoder to make two special presentations tonight. Darrell, if you want to go first, go right ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to ask Kay Ivy and her family to come forward. And is Cindy Hallman in here? Is Cindy Hallman in the hall? Would somebody ask? Have Cindy come in.
She's up there.
Have her come in because... We're going to let you make a speech too, Cindy. Now, is this... Have them come on in too. Yeah. Have her come. I hadn't had a lot of experience of being a grandparent, but I'm pretty sure grandparents are proud of grandchildren, so we need them in here also. Kay is retiring, having served twenty-three years with Alexander County Department of Social Services. And for the last years, and I don't know exactly how many, she has been the voice of DSS. She has answered the phone, she's welcomed people, and the notes that I was given said that Kay could take it. And you can imagine, being a receptionist at DSS, she's probably had a lot of exposure and to be able to take it. But the note also said she could dish it out if she needed to, but we'll not get into that tonight, Kay. But Kay, on behalf of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners, I want to present you this key to the county for your service to the citizens of Alexander County. And I should have read this before I got up. We'll find out if my mic's picking up when I get over here. Is it hearing all right? You picking it up all right? This reads, "Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Kay Ivy in recognition of her twenty-three years of service with Alexander County Department of Social Services, presented November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve." This lady just told me this is her birthday.
All right. It is, isn't it?
We've never had happy birthday, me and the county commissioner. We'll...
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Kay. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, get over there with him.
Get over there.
Oh, get over there.
Get over there.
I want that toboggan to where I want it.
Thank you very much. That was the first, Darrell.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see what Larry sings when Luther gets in here.
Don't think you have to worry about Larry singing.
Go ahead. Where's Luther at?
Guys, if you would, ask Luther to come in and see you in here. Right there. Luther Starks, he's right outside the door.
There he is.
Now, a tax man retiring, there sure is a lot of people in here.
Well, hey, Luther. Luther, we look at this way, maybe they're going to have to see the tax man going, you know? Maybe that's what it is, you know?
Do we applaud now or do we wait?
Luther started working with the county in nineteen seventy-five with the CEDA program, which is a type of temporary service. He was hired by Ernest Roberts Tax Assessor, that was a long time ago, Ernest Roberts Tax Assessor, to assist with a pilot mapping project. His primary duty was to speak with property owners to establish and verify boundary lines. He was hired full-time with the county in October nineteen seventy-nine as the county mapper. He became the county appraiser in nineteen eighty-five. He became the tax assessor in nineteen eighty-nine. He became the tax administrator in nineteen ninety-one and has been responsible for all phases of the tax office, which includes tax collection, assessing real and personal property and mapping. During Luther's tax career, he has been involved in five real property revaluations and oversaw the conversion from paper to electronic record mapping. He was instrumental in setting up the county's first online mapping website and helped to make online tax payments accessible to the public. Luther has been married to Melissa Childress Starks for thirty-four years. They have two children, Brian and Jennifer, and they have three grandchildren, Madison, Caitlin, and Ethan. Luther is an active member of the Titusville Church of God. For recreation, he enjoys playing golf and singing with his brothers. And another thing, he enjoys basketball. The three-point shooter man. The only man I know that can shoot three points and just sit there and knock those three pointers down left and right, and everybody was wondering if he really did work or played basketball all the time. That's what I asked you, wasn't it? Absolutely. But Luther, on behalf, I'm going to read this here so it'll be on the... "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners bestows this key to the county upon Luther Starks in recognition of his thirty-three years of service with the Alexander County Tax Office, presented November the nineteenth, two thousand and twelve." And Luther, it gives me a tremendous amount of pride to present this to you because you've done us a great job, you've been a valuable asset to Alexander County, and even though we have to do the rebounds that people don't appreciate, we still have to do them because state law mandates. And we just have to do what we're told to do because sometimes they just force us to do things we don't like. That's exactly right. But you've been a tremendous asset to the county, to the community, and continue to be an asset. But you've always taken part in things here in the county and done the things that makes you and your family a very proud member of this community. And on my part and the commissioner's part, I'd like to say thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. Take one, let's get a picture. If you don't mind having your picture taken, but since you're going, I don't have to say. I'm not going to sing happy birthday to him, guys.
Come on, thank you.
Come up here in front, guys. May the twentieth.
Nineteen oh nine.
He's going to make all of, he's really making, he's really making this. I hear you, bud. Absolutely. Now, you can say something if you want to, anything you'd like to say, because all these folks showed up just for you tonight. It's by invitation only, as a matter of fact.
Actually, I've been, you know, very fortunate to have worked for the county this long. When I first started out in the tax business, obviously, I didn't know what I was doing and probably still don't know what I'm doing. Anyway, it's really been a blessing, and I have to say that the Lord has looked out for me. And, you know, I appreciate the people here, and I've worked for quite a few commissioners down the line. They've all been good to me, and it's just great and wonderful. Just thankful that I have this privilege today. Glad to go to you.
Luther was talking about how old he was. He's actually thirty-eight years old. It's just the job does a lot, don't you? Oh, yeah, you ready for a agenda?
All right. I'm sorry, no, we got the commissioners' report. Is there any commissioner that would like to report anything? Nothing? Okay, you've got the agenda before you. Is there any deletions or additions?
Mr. Chairman, in the consent agenda, and I'm trying to thumb back to get to the right page, but there is a section that has to do with basically its housing requirements. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, delaying those items until the next meeting for consideration to give us a chance to look them over. That's all right.
Just, oh, you want to delay all of it?
Yeah. And the first, that starts with fair housing complaint procedure and goes to the end of the consent agenda.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, six to five, raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. There was some language in that that we weren't quite sure about. Okay, the first item on the agenda is public comment. I know we have a couple people, a few people that have signed up. I want to go ahead and call on Rusty McGee and Nancy Curley, if you'd like to come up first, please. And everyone, let me make one quick statement. In the interest of everyone's time here, if you could, just try to limit to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Curley. After touring the new detention center Saturday, I am wondering if there has been any consideration given to an appropriate name for the center.
It's public comment, just, we're listening.
I would like, I would like to suggest that the center be named after the late Sheriff Elisha Beber.
Okay, right, thank you.
First off, I'd like to say good evening to you folks, and I know y'all have had several weeks to think about what she just said about the name of the new detention center. So therefore, also, I'd like to ask if y'all can give the reasons for being opposed to naming it after Sheriff Beber, that was killing the line of duty. And if you can't give a reason as to why you don't want to do that, could you give us a reason or explanation as to why it wasn't voted on by the citizens of Alexander County in this past election?
All right, thank you for your comments. We are not prepared to speak on that issue tonight, but we will take it into consideration. And we've got a lot on our plate tonight, as you can well see. All right, thank you. Phil Addison, are you in the room, please? Mr. Addison?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you to hang on one second?
You sure can.
I just want to ask a question. All those of you that are here in support of renaming the sheriff's department, could you please just raise your hand, just have a show of hands? We'll just count them in here, okay.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a pad maybe out in the hall so those that are here could sign it? That way, the clerk will record that in a minute.
Mr. Addison, can I just have you to wait just a few more minutes while they're doing that? And if you would, please, just write your name, and if you're in favor or against. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd say if they would print their name allegedly, so we could tell who they are.
Yeah, and Jamie, it might be however you want to do it. If you want to circulate it in here, if you want to put it out in the hall so people can sign it as they leave the room. We need to make sure we get it in the hall in case somebody doesn't get to it here in the room, anyway.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Addison.
Mr. Baymary, do you, do you mean three minutes pastor time or your time? No, I'm just kidding. Let me introduce myself. My name is Philip Addison, I'm the pastor of Stony Point Baptist Church, and I am here tonight to speak to you on the issue concerning the presentation that's going to be brought to you about the economic stimulus presentation by the Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. I think that's a great title for that group because that's exactly why we're here. It is my understanding that their presentation will include a request asking for the county commissioners to approve a referendum to allow for the sale of beer, wine, and ABC license throughout the county. It's also my understanding that the county commissioners seem to be in favor of this by allowing this referendum to come to pass. Now, I'm here to speak against that referendum from coming to pass. Four thoughts. The paper that was just given to you, I, now granted, this is a packet of information that we found about this at lunchtime today, and I'm sure they're going to come with PowerPoints and all great presentations and graphs, and we've worked on this since lunchtime. And so, if we'd had the opportunity to know about this in a greater detail, I'm sure that we could have come and rebutted and done certain things, but this is what we have. In this packet of information you have, it is full of information about referendums for a county, and I would ask that before you make any kind of vote on something as critical as this for the entire county, that you would consider some of this information as well. I've also pulled off the election results as of May two thousand and twelve, and I have found that many of the constituents in this county have went highly conservative in the issues for this county. Candidate, the marriage amendment in this county was at eighty-six percent. Every candidate that ran in Alexander County or for office that was coming from Alexander County was, that was voted in, was a conservative candidate. This county overwhelmingly went for conservative issues. That's who we are. And we understand that the ones proposing that we have a referendum in this county, we understand that if they have thirty-five percent of the registered voters sign a petition to do that, then by all means, the state regulates that we have to do that. But for the county commissioners that are sitting in those seats on behalf of the conservative voters in this county, we would ask that you would not go against the safeguards that we thought we had in place when we put you in those seats, because that's the trust that we have in you. My personal opinion is that there's going to be, we can't even have, keep a Hardee's in town. How in the world are we going to keep Applebee's and Chili's and these other restaurants that they think is going to further the future? We're going to have biker bars, we're going to have pool halls selling alcohol. They just have to have thirty percent food sales, seventy percent can be alcohol. In that package, you see statistic after statistic, and I know they're going to bring rebuttal statistics over and over again, but the truth of the matter is, the safeguard that the county thought we had in place to keep this from us is you guys. We ask you to be there for that very purpose. And so, we're asking, many of us in the county are asking, that you continue to uphold the very thing that we ask you to do, keep the values of Alexander County the way they are, the values of Alexander County.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. Gary, Gary Jennings? I'm sorry, I called you Gary. I've known you since I was a little fella.
Been in this county forty years. In a crowd this size, don't put your hand in your pocket, you'll have to shake hands with somebody. I would seriously apologize to you ladies for having to stand. We were not sure that they would not clear the halls, and we were afraid that if we stood, we might not be left to speak, so we apologize to you. We'll give you our seats as quickly as possible. I'm Gary Jennings, Chairman of the Alexander County Citizens for Our Faith and Family Values. We are faced again with this, with this question of beverage alcohol. And if beverage alcohol is such a boon to the economy, I would propose to you that all the major cities and states in this nation would not have any problems financially today if alcohol was the basis for any boon to their economy. We are in a situation in the United States of America where the largest cities and states in our nation are at the point of having to be bailed out by the federal government, and they are awash in alcohol of every type, shape, form that you can imagine. One question that looms in my mind is with all the work that I think we see that's gone in to this presentation that's coming before you, why was this not presented to you in time for the commission to act themselves upon it or to call for the thirty-five percent as required by state law for a petition brought back which forces you below to have the referendum so that it could be placed on the ballot that has just been voted for in November and save this county all that expense of another election? I think the answer is simply this, as Phil has touched upon. It would not have had a chance in this world of passing, given the complexion of Alexander County and the conservative vote that has just happened here. Now, I'm going to save you a great deal of time. This thing boils down to the simple fact that the county commissioners can be called upon to consider it in one of two ways. You can, you can deny it by a straight-up-and-down vote, majority rules, you can call for a referendum in Alexander County. Put your name on it, own it, let everyone know how you stand on the issue, I'll bring the referendum before the county. Leave here tonight with your head up, your chin up. I would respect you for whatever you might do, just as I would hope you would respect me. But own it and take possession of it, if that's what you feel that you really need to do, and if this presentation convinces you that they are right. Or, as a matter of state law, if you do not want to do that, then you can call for them to go and bring back thirty-five percent of the registered voters in Alexander County, and those names will be certified, and then we must have a referendum. And we will let the people in Alexander County decide again what they want to do. We have decided this issue once before, we're facing it again. I think the outcome will be much the same if the voters in Alexander County face this referendum. But I think it's a very simple matter of you making just one of two decisions. Either call for the referendum yourselves and/or ask them to go back and get the thirty-five percent of the voters in Alexander County. It should be very easy, the books have all been done for the, for the election just behind us. There's a book of names there, there's plenty of voters that can sign those petitions and bring them back to you. I do not think that they can get the thirty-five percent. I just don't think it can be done. But if that's, if that's what the commissioners wish to do, then that's one of two simple ways to solve the issue. I would encourage you to do everything you can to keep beverage alcohol out of the county. We do not have the choice in Hickory and other areas as to where we can go and eat or whatever. Alcohol is served, we have very little choice about that. We have very little choice about where we buy gas in Alexander County, it does not sell alcohol. The, all the grocery outlets here sell alcohol, we have no choice about that. But we can choose to keep it to a minimum in our county, if we possibly can. And I would hope that the commissioners would allow us the opportunity to continue that in as much as is possible. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Item two on the agenda, Citizens for the Future of Alexander County, calling Bud Kaywood. I guess you're the chairman of the committee?
I'm Bud Kaywood, I'm the chairman for Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. I appreciate the comments by the two gentlemen before me. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French and Ms. Storons. CFAC Citizens for the Future of Alexander County appreciate the opportunity to present to you a plan for the future of our county that we feel confident you will adopt and put in place to begin an upturn in our economy. Let me also say that we appreciate your commitment and service to our county. This presentation will be shown in three parts. Part one will be a very short overview of CFAC. Part two will consist of economic charts and comparisons between Alexander County, neighboring counties, and comparable counties. Part three will be the economic stimulus plan. Presentation will last approximately twenty to twenty-five minutes. What you have up on the screen is our website. It has links to Alexander County Economic Development Corporation, Alexander County official website, Catawba Valley Community College, and the Hidden Knight Center. This presentation will be available on the CFAC website, hopefully by tomorrow. About three years ago, several Alexander County business owners and business leaders began to meet just to chat about the county's future and potential. These were very informal meetings. As these discussions progressed, we began to add new people with new ambitions and thoughts. It wasn't long before we realized we were forming an organized group of concerned citizens who wanted a better economic future for the county. In April of this year, we formed Citizens for the Future of Alexander County, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We have a board of directors, a committee structure, bylaws, and mission statement. Our mission statement is as follows. The objectives of Citizens for the Future of Alexander County are to develop, encourage, promote, and protect the commercial, professional, financial, general business, residential pride, and general appearance of Alexander County, and to extend and promote trade, commerce, culture, and agriculture of Alexander County, and to foster, develop, and protect the commercial, industrial, residential, cultural, and recreational development of Alexander County. Our focus was on special initiatives, and we had a lot of them, but we've actually boiled it down to four very important ones moving forward. To help revitalize our local economy, build tourism on natural scenic beauty, create a cultural arts environment, develop retirement opportunities. We believe Alexander County's unique natural beauty, rich heritage in agriculture, quaint small communities, affordable retirement living, and foothills location make it an ideal travel destination and permanent location. Our first initiative. Identify an economic problem and how can we begin to solve it. Problem: Where are we spending our dollars? Do our residents know what happens when we stop shop, when we don't shop locally? Do our residents know what happens when we don't shop locally? Are we driving our tax dollars to surrounding counties? The answer is yes. Do our residents realize every purchase they make has a point of sale, and the sales tax for that purchase goes to the county where purchased? In all of our meetings over the past couple of years, most of our residents don't quite understand that or realize it. Do our residents know that every time they drive across our county line into Catawba, Caldwell, Wilkes, or Iredal Counties to purchase anything, our sales tax stays in that county? Again, the answer is no. Do our residents understand that none of that revenue comes back to Alexander County? And again, the answer is no. There is a portion that comes back to us that we do know that comes back through point of sale, and that's awarded to all counties.
Per capita.
Per capita, correct. If you excuse me one second. We've got Nick here, we need to get this back on full screen. This chart was put together with help from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. It is a county rank in retail sales based on population. There are 11 counties listed. Alexander County would be in the middle according to the population, five above and five below. We are last in total annual retail sales by more than $22 million. Please note Davie County. The North Carolina Department of Commerce likes to compare Alexander County to Davie County in that we have similar demographics. We are manufacturing-based, rural communities, and considered a bedroom county. Davie County residents leave to work in Statesville, Lexington, Winston-Salem, and some as far as way as Greensboro and High Point. Please note the difference in total retail sales, more than $230 million. Davie County put their Economic Stimulus Plan in place in 2002, and built a new shopping center with restaurants, and revitalized downtown. Below, you can see a comparison to our neighboring counties. Here is a chart of our neighboring counties that include annual retail sales, annual sales food and beverage, and annual sales in restaurants. If you notice, Catawba is at $1.9 billion, 330 million, and 223 million in annual restaurant sales. Iredal is not much different. Wilkes, you can see the numbers up there, and then Caldwell, and then here's Alexander County. These retail sales numbers for Alexander County are microscopic compared to our neighboring counties. You will notice some similarities in the disparity of food and beverage sales and restaurant sales for Caldwell County. They have a similar problem in losing business to Catawba County. It begins at Granite Falls. However, they did address it and built the Super Walmart Shopping Center and added restaurants to stop some of the retail sales loss. One of the first things we did as an organization was to create awareness to shopping locally and spending money in our own county. We brought to you a plan and a flyer for a campaign to buy local. You liked it, put it in the county tax notice, mailed it, and made it happen. That was a seed planted. This campaign has since been turned over to Alexander County Economic Development Corporation to take it to the next level. We've got a short video here that we want to show you. Alexander County has two main channels where dollars are driving out of our county, Highway 127 South and Highway 16 South. We all know it. Here are two 15-second videos without explanation. The morning that Highway 127 South was filmed, we took footage of 1 minute and 17 seconds. During that time, 39 cars left the county, one every two seconds. We spent approximately 20 minutes at each location, same result, car after car after car leaving the county. The North Carolina Department of Transportation estimates that approximately 12,000 cars exit Alexander County every workday. If only one person in each car spent only $5 in neighboring counties, it would amount to $60,000 per day, $300,000 per week, $1,299,000 per month, and $15,588,000 per year. Let me also add this. If those $5 were spent in Alexander County, it would increase our annual retail sales by 8.9%, from $174 million to more than $189 million. The fact is, Alexander County does not get any of the sales tax revenue, or retail sales revenue. It's time to stop spending money outside Alexander County. Again, there is a portion that comes back to us from the state based on per capita. Our dollars, our retail sales, our jobs, our children's future are all slipping away. It's time to envision possibilities. In the past several years, Alexander County has seen some very positive and exciting changes. The expansion of water throughout the county, the opening of Rocky Face Mountain Recreation Area, and on October 1st, the approval to purchase land for the expansion of CVCC Center for Education. These changes don't just happen, they happen through leadership. They happen because there is a plan and a vision, a vision for the future. But we can't stop now, we have to envision all of the possibilities. Instead of this, imagine this. 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 And instead of this, imagine this. And how can we begin to make this happen? Implement a proven economic stimulus plan for more jobs, for more money for schools and emergency and public services, for keeping property taxes low, for a better local economy. In the past 10 years, 12 North Carolina counties recognized the need to implement a proven economic stimulus plan. And over the past five years, 65 municipalities recognized the same need to implement a plan for a better local economy. Citizens for the Future of Alexander County believe it is our time for that opportunity. How can we make this happen? Call for a vote for a countywide ABC referendum. I'm going to pull this chart back up from before. These counties that are highlighted in blue have countywide on-premise and off-premises sale of alcohol. These counties in red have on-premises and off-premises legal sale of alcohol in most of their municipalities. 98 counties in North Carolina have both on- and off-premises sale somewhere in the county. Only Alexander County and Graham County do not sell on-premises. If you look at, Jackson County recently passed their referendum in May. When I talked to the county manager not too long ago, he said that since May, he's had an increase in total retail sales of 6.6%. I asked him if he could determine where that came from, he said no, but the only thing that they did different was pass a countywide referendum. Alexander County is not a dry county, Alexander County is wet. Fact is, neighboring counties get our cash, and Alexander County gets their trash. What's this referendum all about? It's about a reality check. In reality, this referendum is about Alexander County's economic future and well-being of all of our communities. It's about economic growth and new opportunities for Alexander County. We know from other successful referendums statewide that new restaurants, hotels, and businesses will be more willing to open in our county if we legalize the sale of alcohol. Visitors to Rocky Face Mountain Recreation Area, local apple orchards, and other area attractions could then stay here instead of Hickory and Statesville because we'll have more lodging and restaurants. It's about keeping millions in tax revenue here at home, rather than funding the budgets of neighboring counties. It's about the opportunity for all of our county's food and beverage stores to improve their retail sales and not lose business to neighboring counties. We know through research and surveys that our businesses endorse this referendum. We surveyed 16 of 17 food and beverage stores in the county outside of Taylorsville city limits, including Marinas. We had a survey of 12 questions. Four of those questions were very important, the other ones were basically for gathering data. Question number two, how is your business compared to last year? Only 3 out of 16, 19%, say business is better now compared to last year. Question number seven, do you think some of your customers are shopping in neighboring counties? 15 out of 16, 94% believe they lose business to neighboring counties. Question number eight, why? Lower prices, products you don't sell, or one-stop shopping? 15 out of 16 believe it's due to products they don't sell. And question number 12, if you could sell beer or wine... 14 out of 60 said they would sell beer or wine if they were permitted to. These business owners have told us that they can serve their communities better with more variety and deeper inventory on their shelves with the addition of beer and/or wine. There are six commercial retail businesses on Lake Hickory. All of them are Marinas, and four of them are located in Alexander County, none in Catawba County. I would say that we have a handle on that market if we decide to develop it. We have met county restaurant owners who have said they would probably not serve alcohol in their current restaurants, but would certainly consider opening a new one if alcohol were permitted. We have met with restaurant owners outside Alexander County who would consider opening a restaurant if alcohol was permitted. And we have met with convenience store owners who said they would consider new locations and upgrading existing ones if alcohol sales were permitted. This is economic growth waiting to happen, this means more jobs. We know there will be an opposition to this referendum. We know this because there has been opposition to every other referendum in the state. But we also know through research and working with other referendum committees and organizations, chambers of commerce, and EDCs around the state, that if we present the facts, the voters will have the opportunity to make the right choice based on their beliefs. It's time to set the record straight. We need to vote based on facts, not fear. Opponents of legalized control of alcohol will use misinformation to try to scare people. Fear: If a referendum passes, there would be more alcohol-related accidents in DWIs. Fact: Statistics show that there are more alcohol-related accidents in dry counties than wet counties. End in fact: Alexander County's percent of crashes that involved alcohol is substantially higher than that of Catawba, Iredal, Caldwell, and Wilkes, and in fact, higher than the state average. Let me also add that if you go beyond those counties that border us, and go out to 15 more counties, Alexander County still has the highest rate. Fear: Passing the referendum would mean Alexander County will have a bar and gentleman's club on every corner. Fact: Because of its zoning powers, Alexander County gets to decide what kinds of business can open and where. The referendum means more control over alcohol, not less. Fear: Passing a referendum would lead to more consumption of alcoholic beverages. Fact: Distributors of alcoholic beverages say that only the location of distribution changes, and there's not any significant change in total retail sales. All of the facts and information have been validated and are derived from research and surveys, county, regional, and state agencies, and are the foundation for recognizing the need for economic change in Alexander County. Citizens for the Future of Alexander County recognizes that the controlled legal sale of alcohol is a necessary component for the vitality and economic success of our county, as it is for our neighboring counties. This call for an alcohol referendum is about building countywide retail sales and keeping millions of dollars in Alexander County, rather than funding budgets of neighboring counties. The addition of alcohol sales will give the county an economic tool to fund additional dollars for our schools, law enforcement, and public services without raising taxes. The ABC referendum for the future of Alexander County. To permit the on-premises and off-premises sale of malt beverages. To permit the on-premises and off-premises sale of unfortified wine. To permit the operation of ABC Source. To permit the sale of mixed beverages in hotels, restaurants, private clubs, community theaters, and convention centers. This is what the ballot would look like, this is from the ABC Board. We believe an ABC referendum will be a valuable tool for the growth and revitalization of our county, just as it has for many other counties in North Carolina. This county has amazing natural resources, mountains, rivers, orchards, and meadows. And crowned across its north side, the brushies embrace us. I believe our economic development plans ought to center on how to bring our own citizens and folks from surrounding communities into these hills and down from them to town, for recreation, music, art, and all the other human activities these hills are standing here to abide. I didn't write that. It was part of the Rocky Face Mountain Recreation Area dedication speech by Mr. Bob Emting with the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. It was more than a dedication speech, and has resonated in me ever since. It was a charge to our county leaders, town leaders, and all citizens to step up and take charge of our own future. Citizens for the Future of Alexander County urge you to support our right as citizens of Alexander County to call for a vote for a countywide ABC referendum. Thank you.
Yes? I made a comment the other night related to statistics, and Mr. Kaywood's done a good job with his presentation, and there are a few things, though I went through the paper copy this afternoon, there are a few things that need to be mentioned, not that they're necessarily misinformation, but things that need to be looked at. Now, I know you said the Department of Commerce said that Alexander County and Davie County were who they compared in the list you gave. I think Alexander and Yagen County are probably a closer comparison because Davie County, we looked at Davie County, it joins Forsyth, and there has been industrial development, residential development in Davie County because of Forsyth, that we don't have the opportunity for Alexander County by its geographical location. We're associated with the Charlotte Partnership, and we have looked at other associations, and any group we go with, we're always in a rural fringe. So, Davie County is... So Davie County is a little bit, has an advantage Alexander County does not have. The 12,000 cars leaving the county, I have no doubt that your figures are right. When I came on the board in 1996, fifty-seven percent of the working people of Alexander County worked outside the county. And if you take your count and you look at the fact that we've lost furniture, textiles, fiber optics cut back, I'm sure that the number's accurate, and it's not too far from the numbers we had in 1996. The pictures related to, can you imagine this? I went back and checked the ownership of the Trio in Hidden Knight. I don't think it's going to become the grocery store whether there's beer or wine sales or not. I have walked through that hospital with several different groups of people who were interested in doing something with it. The hospital is not going to become an aquatic center. And an urgent care facility will have to figure out a way to generate revenue before that becomes practical. But the, but the statistics you have are accurate. I have only glanced at a few things out of the paperwork that Mr. Addison gave us a little while ago. Couple things: Alcoholics, seven point four percent of the adult population have the problem with alcoholism. There's another one in here, forever dollar generated in tax revenue from alcohol sales in North Carolina. There's a corresponding expenditure of $21.42 due to the cost of alcohol-related problems. So, and the reason I mention that, I'm not debating or arguing with either one of you. You can take statistics, and we've had the conversation. If you give me enough time with statistics, I can prove about any point I want to prove. And one of my favorite quotes is attributed to Mark Twain. There are lies, there are damn lies, and there are statistics. And you can't sit down and just say, okay, here's the facts, and here's how it's going to happen. Several years ago, this came up about having a referendum in Alexander County for beer, wine, for alcoholic beverage sales. And at that time, I had said, and Gary Jennings quoted statistics right. I've got the statutes up here if anybody wants to see it. But if thirty-five percent of the residents or the registered voters sign a petition, a referendum has to be conducted. Another option is for county commissioners to call for a referendum. Based on the information I have, a referendum in Alexander County will cost about $25,000. And a few years ago when this came up, my statement then was, if we can get petitions that represent fifteen, twelve, fifteen percent of the registered voters in Alexander County, I would support a referendum because that is a number that signifies that there is an interest in the referendum. And I still feel that that was a legitimate consideration at that time. And based on what's taken place in the past, based on the information I'm looking at here tonight, I'll make a motion that if we receive petitions reflecting fifteen percent of the registered voters in Alexander County, this board will call for a referendum on beer, wine, liquor sales.
Is there a second? There's no second. I'd like to, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
May I address the petition for a second, please?
Yeah.
Based on the, all of the referendums in the state over the past number of years, a petition, countywide petition, is virtually impossible to make happen basically because of the numbers and the verification of numbers. We have found this out with a number of different referendum committees and groups that have gotten together. So, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Robertson, but I just wanted to point that out.
Has there ever been a, because I don't know this, has there ever been a countywide referendum in Alexander County? Do you know that?
Not that I know of.
Mr. French, do you have any idea if that has occurred? Never been one?
Well, I've been voting since I was twenty-one, and I've never voted on one.
Never been one?
I don't think. I would like to ask the question also of why we already have beer and wine sales in this county. How that happened?
We don't have beer and wine sales in the county.
Well, excuse me, at Spots...
The town of Taylorsville has beer and wine sales, and there is at least one place I know of that has a satellite annexation.
Right. They reached out and pulled it in to get it.
Right. Let me ask you this. Mr. Jennings brought this up. Why was this not put on the ballot during the presidential election? Because you obviously would have more voters out there.
We didn't put it on the ballot because we weren't ready to present it to you. Oh, actually, that's right. It's not allowed. That's correct. Because it is an alcohol referendum, it cannot be attached to a presidential election.
Mr. Chairman, I'm probably going to do either one of the most favorable things or one of the most unpopular things I've probably ever done in my life. But the one thing that I truly believe in is I thoroughly believe in the citizen's right to vote. Whether I believe in this or whether I don't, doesn't matter. The point is that the citizens absolutely, positively have the right to vote on this issue. But I'm going to tell you that this has been a very difficult decision for me ever since Gary Sane and Reverend Jennings approached three years ago, four years ago, I don't even remember. This is not the second time. This is about the third time that this animal has protruded out of the ground and shown its face of something that needed occurring, as it can. And it's been a very difficult situation for me. I've thought long and hard about this. I've had phone calls today. I've had phone calls from pastors. I've had phone calls from people that strongly supported me during the election. And they supported me because they said that they felt like that I was a very conservative person and that I would always stand up for what I believe in. Well, tonight, I'm going to stand up for what I believe in. And it's not whether you buy it, it's not whether you drink it, it's not whether you use it. That's an individual choice, whether I like it or whether I don't. But I do firmly believe from the bottom of my heart that each individual in a community, a state, or a country has the right to vote on an issue of this magnitude. And I am so thankful that the only thing that I need to make a motion on is the right to vote on this issue and not the right to serve it. So I will, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve a countywide alcoholic beverage election. And I think it has to go something like permit the on- and off-premises sale of malt beverages, to permit the on- and off-premises sale of unfortified wines, and to permit the operation of ABC stores, and to permit the sale of mixed beverages in hotels, restaurants, private clubs, community theaters, and convention centers, and that this alcoholic beverage election be held at a special election day. I make this motion tonight, and I make it because it is absolutely, positively the right of the citizens to vote this thing up or down and let the citizens of this county decide what they want. There's a lot of fantastic people on both sides, good people on both sides, and I think that it's time to let the citizens of this county make that decision.
Commissioner Yoder, I'd like a moment to make a couple of comments before we proceed with the vote.
There's not a second. We don't have a motion.
Yeah, yeah. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Berkey.
Yes. I too have struggled as to whether or not I would support the vote for the referendum. As Reverend Jennings so aptly said, and I've researched the ABC laws thoroughly in the state, there's two ways to call for a referendum. The county commission can call for a referendum straight out. The second way for a referendum is thirty-five percent of the voters would sign a petition, and automatically the county commissioners have to call for a referendum. But I've searched my soul, and I've searched my conscience, I've searched my philosophy. And the last time I checked, this country is a democracy. And it's time for the people, on one side or the other. All the county commission is doing is calling for a vote for the referendum. It's not us deciding whether the referendum is going to be for or against these four different things. It's up the people to decide whether it's passed or not passed. So therefore, when I finally decided, and I decided when I woke up this morning how I was going to vote. And when the vote is called for, you will find out how I'm going to vote for it. But I believe since we live in a democracy, and thank God that we do live in a democracy, then we will vote one way or the other on this resolution, and then the people can decide what is going to happen in Alexander County.
I'll make a comment myself. I kind of was, you don't know how difficult it is sometimes sitting in this chair. And we have to make some difficult decisions. And this one has been very difficult, very hard. I've spent a lot of time thinking about it. And as a matter of fact, before I was elected four years ago, people were approaching me on one side or the other, you know. You don't need to bring that up for a vote. We do need to bring it up for a vote. So it's been a tug-of-war for me personally. One thing that kind of changed my mind was the marriage amendment. And we had a lot of people that were in favor of putting the marriage amendment on the ballot. And all they wanted was the right to vote on it. And we can't deny the people of this county the right to vote on this issue when we didn't do it on the last issue. If you're, if you were for that and just asked for the right to vote, that's all they're asking for, is the right to vote. And I'm tired of dealing with it. I'm going to let the people decide. If you always err on the side of freedom, you will be on the right side. And we are not endorsing this one way or another. There's only one person other than myself that will know how I vote when I go into that ballot box, and that's going to be my wife.
Mr. Chairman Koffler.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes four to one.
We appreciate your consideration on this and certainly appreciate the opportunity for the citizens to vote. I know that we have to go to the Board of Elections to file for this election. Mr. French, if we can work out a time schedule just as soon as possible, we would appreciate that. Also, I think there might be a resolution possibly that needs to be read. I don't know if that needs to be done in case there's an issue with the Board of Elections.
Does it have to be read tonight? Is it?
That's the motion that you made.
Was that the motion I made? Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay. I don't know. I just...
Thank you.
Well, I just, I'd just like to comment that there's nothing been decided tonight other than the referendum is going before the people. I personally don't think, don't want that responsibility of deciding this. I've only, these people have been on, bothered with this for years. I've only been a commissioner for two years. But I can tell you that I've had enough. I want the people to vote for it, just like we did on the marriage amendment.
It's up to you guys to fight it out.
Exactly.
When it's over, it'll be done, it'll be settled. Yes or no?
Let me...
For three years. For three years.
Three years.
There are a lot of people that were involved in this process that have done a lot of research and spent a lot of time gathering information so that we could put a presentation together that would be not only available to you but to all of the citizens of the county. And I just want to say thank you to every one of them who helped support this effort.
And I want to say one thing, just to clarify something. This is for the county. This has nothing to do inside the Taylorsville town limits. So this is only in the county.
But every resident has the opportunity to vote.
Yes. Every resident has the opportunity to vote.
Thank you.
That is registered.
Registered.
You have to be registered.
Okay, item number three on the agenda. Calling Seth Harris, county planner.
Hey. Tell the homie I said bye.
Is she out there?
Yeah, she was sitting out there. I just saw her.
That woman?
Are you guys not going to stay for the rest of the meeting?
Is that all y'all care about, putting us on this? They don't know if they's clapping, but they got the fight of their life on their hands.
Folks, folks. Please, we're still in the middle of a meeting here. Go ahead, Seth.
Thank you, sir. This is rezoning case 12-1. The applicant is Ed Wiseman. The property owner is the Hidden Knight Conference Center, LLC. Current zoning district is RA 20 Residential Agricultural. Proposed zoning district is LI Light Industrial. The current land use is a warehouse. And the proposed use is warehousing and light manufacturing. It's located at 140 Old Mountain Road and consists of 2.42 acres. The uses within 100 feet include, to the north, single-family residence, manufactured home, and agricultural sales lot. To the south is more warehousing. To the east are retail sales, which includes Dollar General Store there at the Brown Family Limited property on the map in front of you. And to the west is manufacturing and vacant property. Zoning districts within 100 feet get a little bit complicated, so we have a map here for you. The red is highway commercial. Kind of brownish-yellow color on there is residential agricultural. And then the purplish-blue color is light industrial. So you can see you have a variety of zoning districts there. The property, on this map, the property we're looking at is the one right in the middle with no label on it. Little bit of background on the property. Tax office records indicate the current building was constructed in 1982, which is prior to the adoption of countywide zoning in 2001. The building was used for manufacturing purposes prior to that, as I said, that adoption of countywide zoning. The property is served by a public water and public sewer. The zoning ordinance says RA 20 zoning district is established as a district in which the principal use of the land is for low-density residential and agricultural purposes. The ordinance also says the light industrial district is to provide for the development of areas devoted to light manufacturing, processing, and assembly uses, including warehousing. 2008 comprehensive plan. Two thousand and eight comprehensive plan does show the subject property remaining residential in nature, however, the plan does show nearby uses as being commercial in nature. The nineteen ninety-five Alexander County thoroughfare plan does not mention improvements to Old Mountain Road. The two thousand and ten average daily traffic count for this section of Old Mountain Road was four thousand trips per day. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail to property owners within one hundred feet of the property. An ad was placed in the Taylorsville Times, and a sign was placed on the property. We did receive one phone call that expressed concerns about increases in noise and traffic, and then another phone call just asking general information. As usual, if the request is approved, all landscaping and parking requirements will be enforced. The property does currently meet the parking requirements, however, there is no vegetative buffer around most of the property. It would be required on the northern side, and the planning board had some comment about that, and I'll get to that in a second. Staff does recommend approval of the request due to the following: similar adjacent zoning districts, existence of proposed uses prior to the adoption of countywide zoning. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on October fourth and did recommend approval based upon the following supporting facts: the existence of industrial-type activity on the property prior to countywide zoning, proximity of similar zoning districts, and that the property lies within a transitional zoning area. You can see on the north side of the property, there's a very narrow strip of land there between the existing use and those residential uses. If you go back to the zoning map, those residential uses leave a McCall and Treadway. The ordinance does require a twenty-foot-wide buffer there, however, the planning board did say for staff to use discretion in enforcing that landscaping ordinance. In other words, if we enforce letter of the law, it would restrict access of emergency vehicles and that sort of thing, so...
What is the buffer now?
It's, I would say there's fifteen feet there at most. It's not really a buffer, it's just a strip of empty land.
There's not a buffer required now because it's all RA twenty.
Right, exactly.
I just wanted to know what the width of it was.
It's about fifteen feet. So not even wide enough to meet the requirement anyway, so... So based on information provided, the county commissioners must determine whether the rezoning request meets the guidelines set forth above and is reasonable in regards to the public interest. As usual, the Board of Commissioners must consider all uses within the requested zoning district, not merely the use of which the applicant proposes.
Question, do you know what the intended use of the building is?
They currently are doing some woodworking, sort of stuff in there.
Go back to the plan that shows, you know, the building plan. The one shows residential.
That, the zone...
They're going to be doing woodworking, so they're going to be working eight to five or seven to four or...
They didn't mention any specific hours. They also said possible distribution of this company-owned restaurants. I mean, that's just speculation, but they did mention possible distributions at the planning board meeting.
Well, across the street there is the pallet place, is it not?
Yes, sir.
And you already have the warehousing right below it, which belongs to Mr. Sharp.
Right.
Okay, and then that's the Family Dollar Store right above it, isn't it?
Right, yes, sir, Dollar General.
So traffic and noise, it's already there.
Right.
Okay.
Depends on what kind of operation.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
But they're asking for it to be changed to commercial or...
To light industrial.
Light industrial.
Which it should have been zoned that to begin with.
Because the existing building was there. And that was the concern of the neighbor there was noise, whether they were going to install any dustbins, that sort of thing, or any noise, anything that would create noise, so...
But if it's light industrial and it goes to heavy industrial, they'd have to reapply.
Right, yes, sir. Light industrial pretty much covers any kind of manufacturing, so...
So you are asking us to make a motion?
No, we're a public hearing now.
Public hearing now, not ready for that. Thanks, Darrell, keep me straight.
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay?
Move to close to public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request due to the following: the similar adjacent zoning districts' existence of proposed uses prior to the adoption of countywide zoning. I move to approve this zoning request.
I second.
Mr. Chairman. If Commissioner Yoder agreed to it, I'd like to make two. One of them's already in the motion, but make sure the buffers are put in there for residential.
Yes.
And make sure that their work hours coincide with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So they're not working at...
I won't have a problem at four o'clock and waking the neighbors up.
I second those stipulations.
You need to add a specific stipulation, though.
You can't really add conditions to a rezoning, so...
You can't, this is not a conditional use, so we can't put any... It's got to be as-is.
Then bring us back a revised ordinance so that we can look at that where light industrial, where industrial joins residential property, because we need a provision in there because it's not fair for a furniture plant to crank up saws at four o'clock in the morning when they got neighbors fifty feet away. So bring that to the next meeting.
Okay.
So that's right in behind it, there, the housing area, yeah.
Yeah, but we got other places in the county that suffer the same affliction.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. What item are we on? Four? Okay, thank you Seth. Item number four on the agenda, update on Alexander County Christmas Parade, calling Lenny Rogers, the county extension director.
Good evening, commissioners. As you well know, with the dissolving of our county's Chamber of Commerce, the county government has been called upon to put on the county Christmas parade. And our office, the Cooperative Extension Office, is handling a big part of that along with Dwayne Coley, who is handling the lineup of the Christmas parade. Like I said, the registration is being handled through our office. All people that want to enter an entry into the parade, get their forms either via email, come in person, whatever, and pay through our office. We've also worked at securing volunteers, working the various staging sites the day of the parade, and getting the different floats lined up. So we've got that volunteer sheet pretty much put together. Also, we've put together and taped a cable TV spot to encourage entries to register for the parade. And then also, we've worked with the insurance to make sure that is covered during the parade event. Currently, we have a hundred and thirteen paid entries, but there are several others that are kind of comps, some emergency vehicles and different things. And I'm going to let Dwayne give you an update on some of the other entries and some of the things that are new for the parade.
Thank you, thank you, Lenny. I feel like sometimes I wear as many different hats as you ladies and gentlemen do, but it's always fun to explore new avenues and to be a part of something that's important in the life of our community and our county. And helping put the parade together has been an enjoyable experience for me, and I hope it will be for the next two weeks as we finalize all the planning and operations. Several things that we're doing, trying to do different this year. WACB, Apple City Broadcasting, WTLK will be broadcasting live as they have in the past, and we're fortunate that the county is going to video the parade and feed their commentary with the video. And we'll be showing the parade via the government channel several times prior to Christmas, and we actually hope to provide it on Christmas Day for those who would like to watch from their homes. We also have been involved in trying to expand some of the areas of the parade and have the parade a little more focused. We have adopted a theme for the parade this year, which is Yes, Virginia. And the theme Yes, Virginia has come about as a result of my involvement with another group at Alexander Central High School. Theater Club will be doing a play called Yes, Virginia, so it works out pretty nicely for me. I don't have to change tracks in the middle of the stream, so it's very enjoyable to be able to do both. The other thing that we're going to, we're trying to do is to expand some of the walking units. Some of my students who are involved in the play will be walking the parade route as characters for the play, and to create a little more interest and a little more one-on-one involvement with people on the street, particularly with children on the day of the parade. We have essentially, at this point, about a hundred and fifty-two entries, which is right on target with where we were last year. We are one float ahead of where we were last year, and I had a call today, and I hope we'll be two floats ahead of where we were last year. We have four units from police and sheriff's departments, nine dignitaries, including the lady and gentleman from the county commissioners, who will be riding in the parade with their best waves. And if you need a class in waving, we can provide classes for that. We do like the queenly wave. We've been working at high school with our homecoming queen and our homecoming princess, and helping them perfect their queen and princess wave. So we've got lots of experience and can help you guys and ladies with that.
Dwayne, can I interrupt you one second? We had a list attached into the package.
Oh, okay, good.
But it only shows on this list forty-two entries. So this, y'all are dealing with an updated list, is that...
Yes, this was actually done, I updated this morning. So we have three bands: Alexander Central High School, the West Caldwell Marching Band, and the Oasis Shrine Band, which is composed of folks from the community and others who do music, so we'll have three musical units. Seven of our fire departments will be participating, twelve school groups, eight civic groups, five car clubs, some individual cars and trucks, seven commercial units, four churches, one beauty queen, and some softball teams, and recreation teams, and athletic groups, as well as a few horses and riders that will be participating, for a total of a hundred and fifty-two or so units. We have contacted the Department of DOT, got all the written documentation. We need to close streets and roads and block highways temporarily to make the parade happen. We have taken care of the sanitation issues with Porta-Johns, where they have to be, and we've gotten, we'll be meeting with the sheriff's department and the town police department to go over their instructions in the next few days, so that we're pretty much ready to go. We are, we have trained, met with some volunteers, and got some ideas together, and are going to put together a training prior to the parade, and looking forward to a great day for everyone to celebrate. And I welcome questions. I don't know if you're aware, but the Alexander County Citizens of the Year will be the grand marshal for the parade. Can't remember. Larry, is that you and Hazel that are the... Oh, jeez.
Does that mean Larry's the beauty queen?
Larry has to be at the front with the big parade wave, so he'll be doing great, and we're excited to celebrate that.
We should let him ride behind the horses.
He's actually, to be honest, he's actually hoping to ride behind a horse. He wants a horse-drawn vehicle to pull him in the parade, so we're optimistic that we can make that happen for him. But I welcome questions, concerns. We also have a website, not a website, but an email address, alexanderchristmasparade@gmail.com. If anyone would like to post a last-minute entry, there is a late fee of twenty-five dollars in place now, but we welcome additional entries. If anyone would like to volunteer, we welcome volunteers and people to commit themselves to help us on the parade day, and we look forward to a fun day together.
Dwayne, what is the entrance fee?
It varies from twenty dollars up to floats or like four hundred. So it depends on what kind of entry you are.
Well, the special, did you mention the special trade this year? We probably have two, three, maybe four bands? Did you mention that?
We have Alexander Central, West Caldwell, and the Oasis Shrine Band.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Lenny and Dwayne for the work they're putting in on this. This was happening kind of quick, and appreciate the work that y'all have put in. And I want to mention, and I think I'm right when I say this, the numbering we have and the numbering people will see on the entries like this list is a total. It's not an order of the parade. Santa Claus will not be in the middle of the parade at unit twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, this year we're going to get him out of the way. He causes a big commotion.
And the commissioners will not be at the end of the parade, number forty-one.
You never know.
Go ahead.
One thing I just want to point out, on your sheet, some of the entries have more, I mean, some of the associations have more than one entry, like Foothills Corvette Club has ten, one of the Tractors Club has twenty. So that's how those numbers...
Those are counted as individual units on your sheet?
Well, on your sheet, they are.
Yeah.
And, you know, a lot of people don't know this, but, you know, if you're involved with a lot of the community service, they know that you guys are really heavily involved in community service, but the Alexander County Chamber of Commerce is essentially shut down now. So these guys stepped up to take the place, and they're going to make the parade happen this year. So if it wouldn't have been for them, then we would not have a Christmas parade.
And I want to say thank you to Renee Mead and others who have pulled together data from the files at the chamber, which have made this whole event possible. It takes a huge database from which to gather the information, and I've gone back to twenty-ten to pull people who've been in the parade in the past, made phone calls, sent emails, and tried to gather everyone possible. We don't want anyone to feel as though they've been left out, because it is a transition year. And we've called people who were in, and they said, oh, we haven't done that in three or four years. We know that, but we wanted to give you an opportunity to come back into the fold and to participate. So we're trying to make it as enjoyable an event for our whole county as possible.
Dwayne, I do especially want to thank you and Lenny, but I also want to thank Rick French and the county staff for their assistance they have given you and will be giving you on the parade day.
We have already done two training sessions with Rick French on how to use a sledgehammer to drive stakes, and I think it's going to be successful.
Is that stakes in each other or...
My heart. No, to set up for our lineup, so he's going to help us on Saturday morning with that. And I am appreciative of all the help the county's come through, and we have some volunteers who've stepped up and said, hey, I love doing the parade, and I love a parade, and I want to help. So it's a community effort. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you guys.
Appreciate you.
All right, we'll move along to item five on the agenda. Call on Bradley Earp, the Alexander County EMS Director. Consideration to purchase a two thousand and twelve ambulance for Alexander County Emergency Medical Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. I come to you tonight following our last meeting. We discussed the piggyback option for an ambulance purchase. We were going to piggyback on Yadkin County's bid. The vendor, which is Northwestern Emergency Vehicles, has extended the bid price of a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars for Northwestern. It's an AEV Trauma Hawk ambulance, which is made in West Jefferson, here in North Carolina. It's comparable to the ambulances that we run right now, the frontline trucks. The truck will meet our needs, and it's coming in about sixty-seven hundred dollars cheaper by going with the piggyback route versus going to bid it out. We got an initial quote for budgeting purposes, and it come in at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred, and this is the same truck pretty much. Just a few minor changes, but we can save about sixty-seven hundred dollars by going with this piggyback route. about $6,700 by going with this piggyback route. The unit is all LED, emergency lighting, which gives you a five-year guarantee. It's got the ten-year electrical warranty. You got your paint corrosion warranties on the, on the ambulance. It's a very nice truck. Like I said, it's a 2012 Chevrolet chassis. It comes with a 6.6 Duramax engine, and it's going to have a refrigerated compartment in it to where we can keep some of our refrigerated medications that we carry now. So it'll meet our needs for several years to come.
One question. What is the powertrain warranty on this vehicle?
The, you get a three-year, 36,000-mile warranty bumper-to-bumper, and then you get a five-year, 100,000-mile, I think, on the powertrain.
Why don't you just read through this description, so we'll have it on the record?
Okay. The thirteen-page document or the overview?
I was going to say, we've been here for three years.
Would you stay and read it to the chairman after?
Okay, I will.
I'm going to, I'm going to agree.
Any discussion?
And if any of you guys would like to take a field trip up to that plan, it's a, they've got it well organized now.
I'd like to go out in the parking lot, ride around one time to cool off a little bit.
Yeah, Ash County. But the, they're looking at right now a sixty-day turnaround time on the production of the ambulance.
We've already considered this at our last meeting, so we're not looking at something new. Any more discussion?
Really, Cecilia, I'd like to go with you when you pick it up.
Okay. Be great.
Barky, you better think about that.
If he's driving, I'd be.
Y'all work this out after the main question.
All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bradley.
Good job, Bradley.
Have a good night.
Let's see, what, we're on number six. Call on Cindy Holman, DSS Director. She's going to discuss the North Carolina's Energy Assistance Program.
Good evening. I think you have been forwarded a brochure in your packet that talks about the Low-Income Energy Assistance Program and the Crisis Intervention Program. I have a terrible voice, so bear with me. You probably remember, Matthew Reese and I came last year and talked to you about the energy programs and the loss of funding coming into those programs into the county last year. And we just wanted to bring that to your attention again this year. We did not have much of a winter last year, and we were able to squeak by. We have a little bit of a different situation this year, so we kind of wanted to make you aware. I'm going to talk about Low-Income Energy Assistance Program is a one-time payment, once a year, that has to do with heating only. And we'll start taking applications for that on December the third. Persons who are sixty or older, who are disabled, who are receiving disability payments through Social Security, veterans who receive 100% disability payment, or those who receive railroad retirement and are eligible for Medicare, those are all folks that will be eligible to apply come December the third. I want to tell you how much money we had two years ago, or 2010, the fiscal year 2010, 2011. We got $368,966 that came to Alexander. This year, we have $54,294. So I just, that's a big difference. That's $314,000 less money. We anticipate only the elderly and disabled are allowed to apply for that from December the first till February the first. We likely anticipate that that money will be gone February the first, when it comes time for families who have young children and that kind of thing to apply. So we wanted to let you know about that and to let folks out there know, we are doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that our seniors and our disabled folks know. We have put up signs everywhere. We've been, we're running things in the Taylor's for Times. We're running an ad on the radio. We've posted on the website. We've put things in the post office, in the senior center, everywhere that we can think of to get this information out to our seniors and disabled folks in the community.
Cindy, a question for you. For those who apply and are eligible, is it first come, first served for this $54,000?
It is. It is. And we anticipate a line at the door on the, on the first day that we, we usually do have that.
Do you anticipate any additional funds being available after?
Last year, we, we received funds for this program, Low-Income Energy Assistance. We received funds on three different occasions for a total of $79,000. This year, our first allocation is $54,000. So even if we get more money, we don't think it will be much.
Right.
We think it will go very quickly. Last year, on the very day that we ran out, we got a new allocation. We got $43,000, $17,000, $8,000, and $19,000 last year. So we got that between January and March. Thankfully, February and March were warm last year, and we did, you know, we did pretty well.
How do you determine what each one gets?
And under the Low-Income Energy Assistance, this little chart that I gave you, no, it does not have the amounts in here. There, last year, the amounts were based on what kind of energy you used. If you got, if you used electricity, you would get a certain allotment. If you used wood, you would get a different allotment. This year, it is going to be based on how many people live in the home and the percent of poverty in the home. So it will be, it'll be an eligibility. They'll come in, they'll sit down with us, talk about income, and depending on how many folks live in the home. The good news this year is last year, everyone in the home had to be sixty or disabled in order for a family to apply as of December the first. This year, only one person in the home has to be sixty or disabled.
Cindy, you alluded to something that's on this information you passed out. Household cannot have resources over $2,200. Now, I can read into that several different things. What does that actually mean?
As far, it's, it's.
Net worth, money in the bank, what is?
That's, that's a savings account, checking account, liquid assets. It doesn't count their home or anything like that.
Cars, motorcycles, anything like that?
No.
Just money?
Liquid assets.
Cindy, the dates you had for applying, what were they again?
December, this year, December the first is on the weekend, so it'll be December the third, will be the first day to apply for that Low-Income Energy Assistance Program. And that will be through February the first. On February the first, if we still have money, then all other households will be eligible to apply that are under, let's say it's 130% of the poverty level.
This handout says December first through March 31st.
Well, the program will, the total program will last that long. From December to February the first, only the elderly and disabled, but they can still apply in February or March. It's just all other households can apply also. Does that make sense?
Not much.
Okay.
The, it does when you take the February out.
Okay.
If everybody can apply from December first through March 31st, and then all other households can begin applying February first, that makes sense.
Okay. That's Low-Income Energy Assistance. The next program is Crisis Intervention Program. That's a year-long program that is a crisis program for heating or cooling. We have received this year $122,918. Again, as you mentioned a minute ago, we don't know if we'll receive some contingency monies, or if there's any rollover funds from last year. So we could receive more money, but for right now, we've been told not to anticipate anything. We received $122,918. As of today at lunchtime, we had $3,200 left. We had temperatures over ninety day after day in the summertime. As you well know, elderly folks, young people, young children, someone just getting out of the hospital can be, heat can be as serious as cold can. And so we have only $3,200 Crisis Intervention Program money left right now. We do hope to get more money, but that money will probably be gone in the next couple of days. So I think when we come back after Thanksgiving, we can feel pretty good that this first allocation will be spent. This last little cold snap, folks have been coming in one right after the other. It's 150% of poverty level is what they're eligible for, and families are eligible for a limit of $600 under that program. The only other thing we have for emergency assistance, we have an all-county funded program. We have $25,000 that we have budgeted year after year. That is more, since we have these other programs for heating, cooling, we mostly focus that on water, power, rent, and these people have to be, being evicted, their water has to be turned, being turned off in order for them to be eligible. That's 110% of poverty. We have $17,433 left in that account. So our monies are very limited. If we have a really bad winter, we're going to be in trouble as far as keeping people warm. So I, I wanted you to be aware of that. We've tried to be very selective. On the days when it's been 60 degrees, we've not given out a dime of crisis energy money. We, we've been up and down. Whether the, if the temperature was going to be 30 degrees that night, then we've tried to see if it was an emergency, that kind of thing. But we could be in a tough place this year. And we thought we were going to be in a tough place last year. We came and talked to you and made sure that the county folks that were watching were aware of our situation with these funds. Any other questions?
I do have one. You know, when I opened my Duke Energy bill, they have an energy assistance program. Does, does, do you coordinate anything with them?
We don't, but they do. Our, our folks are aware, our energy folks are aware of anything that's available through the different companies, and we do refer them to those programs. And we try to match our funds with other resources in the community. We really do try to, to be good stewards of this money. But as you know, when it, it was, you know, it was really hot this summer, and we had a lot of folks that needed some help then.
Got cooler a little quicker, too.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
And just so everybody knows why Matthew didn't come with you today, Matthew's on his honeymoon.
He is.
Matthew was married Saturday at 2:00.
Yes.
And I'm going to stick around. Holly's not here for the adoptions presentation.
Okay. We'll move on to item number seven on the agenda, Adoption Awareness Month Proclamation. Call on Commissioner Darrell Robertson.
We have in our packet a proclamation that was made by Governor Beverly Perdue. And the proclamation is about Adoption Awareness Month. And before I read the proclamation, I want to recognize our folks at DSS and the parents in Alexander County who are foster parents and adoptive parents. One of the most positive things you can experience is to see those people get together, and it's absolutely amazing what love does for a child. And they do realize it. And I want to thank the folks here in Alexander County who participate either as foster parents or adoptive parents. Proclamation. Whereas the annual observance of Adoptive Awareness Month is celebrated of all North Carolina adoptions, and whereas the 2012 theme for Adoption Awareness Month is you don't have to be perfect to be a perfect parent, North Carolina families are encouraged to share their hearts and homes with children waiting to be adopted. And whereas every child deserves the opportunity to grow up in a loving, stable family, and adoption is one way to build a family. And whereas caring adults can make all the difference in the lives of young people, sibling groups, and children of different ethnicities. And whereas in 2011, 1,394 children in North Carolina were adopted from foster care, and whereas each county Department of Social Services of the state of North Carolina, foster care and adoptive unit works diligently to place foster children in adoptive homes. And whereas North Carolina Kids Adoption and Foster Care Network within the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Division of Social Service recruits adoptive families in the hope of placing current special needs foster children who are waiting adoption. Now therefore, I, Beverly, Eves, Perdue, Governor of the State of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as Adoptive Awareness Month in North Carolina, and commend this observation to all citizens as an opportunity to celebrate foster and adoptive families and spread awareness on behalf of the hundreds of foster children in North Carolina who are waiting for a loving family. I further encourage communities, businesses, groups, schools, faith-based organizations, and families to participate in efforts to find permanent loving families in North Carolina, for North Carolina's waiting foster children. Signed, Beverly Perdue, Governor of North Carolina.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say a few words Thursday night. Had the opportunity to go to one of the most fantastic events in this candidate we have. It's a great opportunity for me, because I want to reiterate what Commissioner Robertson said. I went to the Adopted Foster Parents banquet, and it's amazing to watch these young kids and to watch these parents. There's one parent, a set of parents there that adopted five children, and there's a lady and a gentleman that were there. They, they adopted a little girl. And I'm going to tell you, folks, if you see the little girl with her parents, there's no way that mother could ever say, that's not her daughter, even though it is her daughter now, but it's not her naturally born daughter, and she looks exactly like her mother, absolutely beautiful. And these kids, one of the other major things that stuck out to me that night was the fact that one of the ladies that works with social services was a guest speaker. And she talked about, she has worked with children in orphanage, orphanages, and other areas that have been left by parents who had a child and said they didn't want them. But she's 37 years old, and she adopted an 18-year-old. It's an 18-year-old young man. And it was really strange to hear her talk about how social services really questioned her about why she wanted to adopt an 18-year-old, when she's always worked with young kids ever since she graduated from college, her and her husband, and they've done a tremendous job. But one of the things that we forget, and one of the things that I'd like to stress, is the fact that we tend to forget the older children. We forget, tend to forget the teenagers. Most of us think, well, he's turned 18, and they can go do what they want to do, they're on their own. They don't need anything. They can go get them a job. We need to remember those 16, 17-year-olds. They need, they need guidance, too. They need a helping hand. And one of the greatest things we can do is not talk about, well, that mean little kid or that kid that's got a problem. We need to reach out to them. Because that child that you may be reaching out to may be a child that's in jeopardy like Zara Baker was. And you reaching out to them and doing something, you may prevent something and lend that helping hand and a loving arm to a child that needs it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. You.
How many families do we have that, well, parents really, that are adopting? And do you have a name that we could give out tonight, so the people could know who these people are we're praising?
We, we actually did, we, let me, I wanted to give you a couple of numbers. We, we did eight, eight adoptions last year, 2011, 2012. We've done two since July the first of this year. We have seven children currently freed for adoption. We're only recruiting for one child. So we have all those other children either home identified, or they're in their prospective adoptive homes. So it looks like we're going to do at least nine this year. Our licensing worker is Tanille Hileman. Is that what you were looking for? You can dial the agency at 828-632-1080 and talk to Tanille Hileman. She is recruiting for foster parents all the time. We promote the foster-to-adopt philosophy, which means if folks want to adopt, the best way to get an adoptive child is to foster for us. We, if you foster, you go in the front of the drawer. If you show us how you can take care of a child, then we're going to look to you as an adoptive parent.
Well, I was actually asking for the names of the people who have volunteered to adopt these children. They're the ones that should get recognition.
That, I, I don't know.
That's not, okay.
I don't know whether I could release their names.
Okay. Well, I just happen to have a family friend that adopted, that adopted a girl. She's never, the, the friend has never been married. She is now probably 50 years old or more. And this girl, she raised her, and she joined the service, and she's now going overseas to Japan to be with her. And that's. And that's, was right here in this county, so I know some of them. My neighbors down the road have adopted children and keep them right now for Alexander County. I don't need any more, I've got more kids than the law allows.
Well, we certainly...
Hogs.
Appreciate, appreciate our adopted parents and our foster parents, and, and anyone that's interested, we'd be certainly glad to talk with them. Thank you, Judy.
Yes.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, item eight on the agenda, Resolution Requesting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to Appoint a Review Officer for Alexander County. I call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the retirement of Luther Stocks, we need to approve a resolution requesting the county appoint a review officer, and that would be Guy Curley. The main purpose of the law is to transfer the responsibility, responsibility of reviewing Platts to determine whether they meet recording requirements and the registered deeds, and they go to the review officer, and they will review maps and Platts. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Move to approve the recommendation.
Second. Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
Who has been doing this?
Luther.
Luther.
And you're just transferring the responsibility?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine on the agenda, Proclamation Declaring December 1st through December 31st, 2012 as Christmas in Bethlehem. I call on myself. I'll read this proclamation. It's something we do every year. Proclamation declaring December 1st, December 30th through December 31st, 2012 as Christmas in Bethlehem. Whereas the Bethlehem Community Development Association has been a longtime supporter of improvements and quality of life issues in the Bethlehem area, and whereas Alexander County government wishes to assist the Bethlehem Community Development Association in promoting events which increase community spirit and offer opportunities for fellowship during the Christmas season, and whereas the Bethlehem Starlighting has been a fixture of the Christmas season for more than 30 years, annually drawing thousands of citizens to the Bethlehem area, and whereas the annual Bethlehem Starlighting will take place on December 1st, 2012, and whereas a live nativity drive-through will occur December 7th through 9th, 2012, and whereas these events, these Christmas events promote values and morals which are the binding fiber of the community, and these events are strongly supported by the Bethlehem Community Development Association, area churches, area churches, businesses, and citizens. Be therefore it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners declares December 1st through December 31st, 2012 as Christmas in Bethlehem, adopted the 19th day of November, 2012. I'll make that in form of a motion. Second. Got a motion in the second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item number 10, Sales Tax Report, calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have a sales tax report for two months, and you've been handed out the most recent sales tax report, which is, of course, for the three months. Three months into this fiscal year, we've collected $901,714 in sales taxes. That's just about where we should be, about 25% through. We're running $35,225 ahead of where we were budgeted last year, and that's good, but it's not quite good enough because we've had to spend or appropriate $45,442 for the hold harmless. But again, we're about 4%, lower 4% ahead, but that's all eaten up with the hold harmless money, and that's the way it started out last year. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. French. Item number 11, number 11 on the agenda, Board Appointments and Reappointments, calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is to reappoint members of the Building Services Advisory Committee, reappoint all these members for one year, Clint Kennedy, Larry Jenkins, Brent Fox, Mark Foy, Tony Lackey, David Land, Seth Harris, Lynn Teague, and Burt Gibson.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second. Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 on the agenda, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 14 through number 22, call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number 14 is to increase the Planning Department budget for a part-time office assistant position, to budget for an estimated refund to the North Carolina Department of Juvenile Justice for 2011, 12 unused balances from JCPC, Rainbow Center, and Nurturing Parenting Program, to increase the fire emergency services budget for receipt of equipment from Homeland Security Grant Base through Cleveland County. Trailer mounted generator equipment received in July after paying $2,963 to Cleveland County, to increase the Health Department budget for additional immunization funds. A Budget Amendment Number 15 is to amend the project budget on the county books to agree with, to agree with the revised budget approved by the North Carolina Department of Commerce. 10% of the total grant amount was transferred from water improvements to housing rehabilitation due to water improvements actual cost coming in under budget while housing rehabilitate, housing rehabilitation actual costs are over the original budget estimates. Number 16 is to reduce the project budget to zero for the North Carolina Centers de-obligation of grant funds for this project. The grant was withdrawn due to lack of grant-supported activity by the company during the grant period. Number 17 is to increase the jail budget estimate for the remaining cost to finish the project. Number 18 is to increase the governing body professional services budget for one-year contract with a law firm to provide 24/7 law enforcement legal support. Number 19 is to increase the governing body professional services budget for contract with a law firm to review existing policies and draft 15 policies for the Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office Policy and Procedure Manual. Number 20 is to increase the governing body professional services budget for contract with a law firm to review existing policies and to draft two policies for the Detention Center Policy Manual. Number 21 is to increase the governing body professional services budget for outside legal counsel related to law enforcement matters. Number 22 is to use funds set aside for information technology projects, that is to purchase and install four MDTs, mobile data terminals, and printers in the four Dodge Chargers being purchased for the Sheriff's Department. And that's all the budget amendments, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Did you, I didn't see your hand.
I voted for it.
Okay, unanimously.
Yeah, I voted for it.
I didn't get my head turned quick enough.
Sorry. It was there.
Item number 13 on the agenda, County Manager's Report, calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. In lieu of the time where we are, I don't believe I have anything new to add at this time. I do have some items for closed session, which will be later on tonight, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about the report.
Anyone have any questions?
Mr. French, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Have you gotten any replies back from the adjacent property owners from Rocky Face?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. The consent agenda, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Second.
Move to approve as amended, thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
One comment. Part of this is the registered deeds record retention and disposition schedule. Those, that document is available at the registered deeds office or the county offices, like 200 pages, is that ballpark, Jamie? That's the reason there's not one for everybody here tonight. If anybody's interested, they are available.
She has weather, she needed it.
Ryan can read that after the debate.
Read it afterwards.
Did we vote on that? Okay, any more discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. And we do need to have a closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A 1, 4, 5, and 6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I'll make that in form of a motion. Second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.